Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting in order. Please rise for the pledge. Make a note that Councilman Kirby and Councilman Trinkle are absent. We'll start with old business approval of minutes. The regular meeting minutes of December 15, 2022 were provided for review. I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of December 15, 2022 as presented. A motion and a second. Any discussion? All roll.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Sednikah?
Yeah.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Motion passed. Audience participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the count on an item that is not on the agenda? Jan?
My name is Janet Glabney-Haldeman. I live at the East Prince's Story Club. I am here this evening in spite of the council for some of the students on the ballot. And even though I'm a little surprised that we get so much votes because I haven't had to vote yet, I'm really excited for them to have a vote. Thank you all very much. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Appreciate that. Okay, new business. Item number two is the city compensation study. Dr. Victoria McGrath from McGrath Human Resource Group will present the results of the citywide compensation study. Staff will discuss the cost implementing the proposed salary structure. Funds have been built into the budget to accommodate the adjustments. So I think we'll listen to the brief before we take the motion.
Sounds good.
All right, so I'm up, ready to go.
Yep.
I'm going to share my screen here. Hopefully that'll work. Hopefully you can all hear me. Welcome this evening. Thank you much for having the opportunity to meet with you tonight. I am Dr. Victoria McGrath. I'm CEO of McGrath Human Resources Group. I have may have met some of you a year or two ago when we worked on the police compensation study. But for those of you who may be new to the council, we've been in business since the year 2000. So we are celebrating our 22nd year in business and May of this year will be starting our 23rd. We work predominantly with public sector clients. And so this is not our first compensation study by any stretch of the imagination. Currently, we have a little bit over 500 clients in 42 states company-wide. There's two sides of our business. We do public safety consulting, so we do police, fire, EMS, and dispatch. And then obviously, our side is human resources where we do compensation studies, performance management, employee handbooks, all that fun stuff that most of you dread. So we were asked to come in and take a look at the non-police positions. Let's just say the non-sworn positions, although we do, we have some of the officers in here. And we actually reconfirmed the compensation philosophy of the organization back with the police. We set it at the average market rate. And so we're continuing to keep at the average market rate. We obtained data from the external market through a number of benchmark positions, and I'll share with those in just a second. But those were developed collaboratively with the city and then approved by the city. With that, we also obtained information on current positions. We did meet with department directors so that we could understand what their positions were. Because a public works, excuse me, laborer could be anything from a skilled individual to a non-CDL individual. And then we integrated all that information into the compensation plan, which we were, we did share with department directors to make sure we had positions in proper alignment. We did assess some of the city's benefits, and we'll walk through those very briefly. But that's not the main focus of the presentation this evening. We'll be on the compensation side of the project. So as I said, we did have interviews with city administration, the finance, the city clerk, department heads and managers, so we could gain an understanding. Obviously, we were fortunate enough to know about Lansing from our previous work there, but we didn't work with these other departments. And so we wanted to make sure that we truly understood what those positions were. We looked at your current compensation system and job descriptions and current policies and analyzed whether those were working or not working. Employees completed something called a position questionnaire. The petition questionnaire is about a 15, 16-page document that gives us significantly more information regarding a job versus just the job description. So it goes into the types of decision one makes, the consequences of error, type of technology used, the type of finance they use. Obviously, some of the factors are working externally out in the environment versus working in an office. And that develops something called a point system. And so we can compare and contrast positions by points. Because you might have an administrative assistant who's not going to get a lot of points in equipment, since they're working with a copy machine and a computer versus a public works person who's going to get a lot of points in equipment because they're working with multimillion-dollar pieces of equipment. So that helps us put positions and align them within pay ranges. And that's just one factor that we use. In addition, we solicited compensation data from 18 public organizations. And we look at the minimum, the midpoint, the maximum, and incumbent salaries. Sometimes we can get a better true idea of where you're sitting in the market when we compare what people are actually making to what people are actually making within your organization. These are the organizations that were approved that we went out and got information from. Obviously, some of the positions, we didn't get data on every position, you know, wastewater. We didn't get information on the library. But obviously, a lot of the folks around you were involved in the study, and a lot of folks around you are doing studies or have done studies. So you're keeping in line with the Joneses, so to speak, when it comes to that. When we align positions together, we do something called a comp ratio, because we can never get the same exact number for a position. So if the average market rate is 25,000 and I'm making 24,800, the employees can say, aha, see, I'm not at 25,000, so I'm not at the market. So compensation of provides a range around that. And in this case, we're now using 45% below market and below the average and 10% above. It used to be 40%, however, the market is moving so rapidly that anything in the lower portion of the 40% comp ratio is now considered to be out of market, where it used to be on the verge of falling out of market. And so therefore, we've tightened the range last year or two because of what's going on within the economy, as well as what's going on within the labor force. So when we look at your minimums, what we're doing is we're looking on paper, what your current minimums are compared to on paper, what the average market minimum is for benchmark positions. And the city doesn't fare that well. 67% of the positions would be considered undermarket and would need some type of adjustment. What we don't have reflected in here and what we, what we can't gather the information on is the city has been hiring higher than the minimum for a while, knowing that their minimums were not appropriate. But so are the folks around you. So this may be worse because they're hiring higher in the salary range than you are. Or this may be the same thing that they're looking at, that we're hiring higher and they're hiring higher, and so we're being competitive. So it's kind of hard to tell at this point in time whether or not your minimums are reflective of the market. But I would say with 67% showing that they're undermarket, we need to do something to adjust those minimums to become an attractive employer. The other piece we look at is we look at how much people make compared to what people actually make. And sometimes this is a tour reflection of the market. Because it tells me are people moving through that salary range and are your employees keeping up with what other similar types of positions are making out within the external market? And again, we're slightly undermarket, where you have 58% of your benchmark positions are being paid below the average market rate. We have 42% that are aligned with market. That's not surprising when we talk about your employee demographics in a minute. You're going to see that you do have a number of folks that have been with the city for a while, and those are the folks that are in the upper end of the salary range. I do expect to see people in the 30% comp ratio and the lower 40% comp ratio, because tenure does affect it. So if I have a brand-new employee and I'm comparing it to the average market rate, I'm going to see that that employee is at the lower end of the salary, which is where they should be. What's concerning is I shouldn't see this many folks down and through here. This is again telling me that these positions are out of alignment with the market and are too low, and you're starting your folks too low. So I've got a couple of issues here is, you know, looking at these positions as well as, you know, are these people moving through that salary range at an appropriate rate in order to make sure that they're earning an average market salary? So a couple of things we talked with administration on. The salary structure needs adjustments to be competitive. And so we'll show you what that's going to look like. Typically, in a salary structure, there's something called a market rate. The market represents the 50th percentile. And the market rate means that I should get to that market rate or around that market rate within three to five years. It means I'm fully capable and competent of doing the job. And you have, you know, three to five years, because if I'm a brand-new employee and I have just the skills and education needed for the job, I'm going to be starting at the minimum, and it's probably going to take me four years before I get to that average market rate. But you could bring somebody a little bit higher in the salary range, where it may not take them as long to get to the average market rate, because they bring some skills, experience to the table. That's definitely beneficial to the city. So it might take them a shorter time period to get to that average market rate. Right now, looking at how much you're adding to the salary and how much people are getting is a little bit low. You know, and I understand government finance, but you know, when we're adding 2% or 3% of the salary schedule, when folks around you are adding 4% or 5% of the salary schedule or inflation rates at 8% or 9%, we're just not keeping up with that salary schedule with the economy. One of the things that people tell me about, well, we can't get aggressive now, because what happens if the economy busts? And all of a sudden, we have all these people out there that are looking for jobs. Typically, during inflationary periods, we see higher levels of layoffs. And that's because the economy is slowing, you know, retail stores or whatnot aren't keeping as much and so forth. They can get rid of employees that are hindering their overhead. The problem we're having now is that it's finally occurred to us. It finally, it started in 2019. It got exasperated in 2020 and 21. And that is, there's not enough people to go around. The few baby boomers in the room, I can't see everybody, but I see everybody's probably too young to be considered a baby boomer. But the baby boomers are retiring. And the baby boomers didn't have as many children as their, as their parents did. And so we're all vying for a shortage or a smaller labor pool. We also have a smaller labor pool that really wants different things. Benefits aren't as important to them. But instead, higher pay is looking for flexible work schedules, work from home, being valued on the job, making sure that I have professional growth within the organization. And so those are the types of things that we need to start looking at in addition to compensation to, to enhance folks. Now, obviously, there's some of us that still value benefits, and you do have a population within your organization that does value the benefits. So obviously, we can't get rid of those, but we need to strike that balance of compensation and benefits to maintain the current workforce and to attract a workforce that's coming. There's a NeoGov article that just came out recently. It's called "The Quiet Crisis in Government." And it's basically saying that the number of positions in the government sector have increased over 56%. But yet, the volume of applicants is decreasing and decreasing at 37%. The crisis in the government article that just came out is saying that there's a 49% decrease in the applicant pool. So we're vying for a very small group of people who want to work in government. And people have this perception that government is too slow, it's too antiquated, it's too bureaucratic, it has to go through too many committees to get approved. And by the time it goes through all the committees to go approve, you've already lost the candidate to somebody else. The private sector is kicking our butt, because they're reacting much quicker, they're doing things much quicker, they're making decisions much quicker. And right now, the private sector is beginning to outpace the public sector when it comes to employment. However, they're still scraping for the same small pool of people that we are. When we look at your employee demographics, you're kind of interesting, actually. Your average years of service is 10.1. And those people that are over the age of 50 are really holding up your years of service. So that's what the group that's allowing it to be 10.1%. That comprises almost 35% of your workforce, which is, which is there. Which means when we looked at that incumbent salary, I probably should have seen more people above the 50th percent, the 60th percentile in their incumbent pay. Because they've been there for a while, and they should be further up the scale. What is of interest, though, is you really are detracting a lot of young folks. 20% of your population is the under the age of 40. And I'm going to be very stereotypical here, but under the age of 40 is the group that has a tendency to move to the next job. If it's going to be offering more money, if it's going to be offering some incentive that I think is great, that's going to be more important to me than staying with my current employer. I had a client of mine who said, "We're recruiting from the generation of the shiny object." Wherever the shiny object is, that's where we're going to go, because obviously, that shiny object is better than the object that we have at our current location. So you do have a group of folks here that the question is going to be, what are you going to continue to have them stay? Because having and training those folks and having them leave someplace else is very costly to the organization. You've got a group here, 40 to 49. Typically, this group is a little bit more stable. This is the group that has come to their senses and realized that health insurance and some of these benefits are actually important. And they traditionally do not move as quickly as folks under 40. However, this group is starting to say, wait a minute, if I'm staying here, but I can go across the street and I get $5,000 or $10,000 more, maybe it's worth the effort to do that. So again, it's not a huge group, but it is a population that we need to be considerate of. And what, again, what are we going to do, retain? And how are we going to start using this group for succession planning to replace the group that's, that's up here? So for compensation philosophy, back when we did the police study, we saw, we looked at what should the average market rate be? When we look at the data, we will eliminate any outliers, anything that's higher, low, more than one or two standard deviations above. We're going to throw out so that we don't skew that data. But we have maintained the average market rate. In addition to that, one of the things you also have to consider is the cost of turnover. And right now, the cost of turnover has typically been looked at by one and a half times the cost of a person's salary. That can go up to two or three times if you're looking at public safety, based upon all the needs and training that requires going in there. But the other cost to turnover is the, you know, people feeling overworked and underappreciated because they're trying to pick up the slack of, of other folks that are, that are not there, or you're having problems recruiting or getting in the door. So all this stuff makes to say, you need to do something with your salary schedule so that you can look at attracting and retaining. So we are keeping a pay range system. The pay range has 16 pay grades. I say step six, but it's actually the position point represents the average market rate. The goal is to get to that rate within three to five years and making sure they get there. I don't have a concern if people get to the control, to the position point, and then once they get beyond it, slows down a little bit. Because I'm making, I'm getting you paid to what the average market is, and now I'm paying you above average. We have built in some benchmarks behind the scenes so that human resources can look each year and say, okay, are we moving people through the salary range? So are we giving enough to the salary schedule? Are we giving enough to people moving through the schedule? And if not, and they have good performance, obviously, we're not going to reward a poor performer. But maybe they need an extra market adjustment in order to get within the correct quartile within the salary range that's equal to their years in the position. The police were not included in the study. They have been placed on the salary range only because they were on the salary range before. And we've placed them into a pay grade that's close to what the salary range of their current schedule is. So as I said before, we need to be looking at two increases. This is just an example. No one can panic. There's nobody being paid $12.53 an hour. But this is step one. And like I said, two increases need to occur. I'm using January and July as my two points in time. The city can determine whatever time fits their fiscal year. But once a year, the schedule has to increase. In this, in this example, it's only increasing by one and a half percent. But I would stay where I am, and I would go up by one and a half percent. So I would go from 1253 to 1270. Then in July, they need to get their performance increase so that they're moving through the range with the goal to get to this position point within three to five years. And like I said, you could have an additional adjustment if I'm only at 1370, and I've been here for 70 years, seven years. I might need to get a little bit of a bump in order to get me closer to the 1401, which is the position point on this example. Once we figured out what all the market data was, we then placed positions into the salary schedule. And this is sometimes where employees get confused, because they look at, well, I have this, or I'm a great employee, or I put in the extra goals. And, you know, I do the extra step or whatever it is. And what we're looking at, we're strictly looking at the position. What's the skills, education, experience, accountability, consequences of error, et cetera, of the position? And where that should align within the pay grade. We're not looking at the person. So if someone says, well, I should be placed in a higher pay grade because I have a bachelor's degree. That's nice that you have a bachelor's degree, and continuing education is definitely good. Look, I have my PhD because I wasn't smart enough to know when to stop going to school. But I don't need to have a PhD to be an HR director. And I don't need to have a bachelor's degree to be a mechanic or to be an administrative assistant. So it's nice that you have it, but we're looking strictly at the position and where it lies. In addition to that, we look at the position analysis that we did with the point factor system. So you might have positions that have the same points but end up in different pay grades because the external market is different. We then look at internal comparability, as it makes sense that these positions are aligned together within your organization and the types of responsibilities that they have. And then we also look at compression. So you may look at the schedule and say, okay, this is above market. This is, you know, but we looked at, okay, where does the subordinate position place? And when will the superior position go beyond the, the, when will the, yeah, when will the superior position go beyond the subordinate position? Sorry about that. I've been on Zoom meetings since eight o'clock, so I'm getting a little tongue-tied. So it's not just one factor that we look at in placing the position. It's the marriage of all four and taking a look at where that position should be placed. I get this all the time. Well, you know, Overland Park next door pays this amount of money for the position. Well, let's put it this way. Everybody wants Overland Park in their salary schedule. But nine times out of 10, and we did not use Overland Park, but nine times out of 10, Overland Park may be paying more. But that would be only one of all the comps that we would use and whether that position would stay within that. Because again, we're looking at an average. We're not looking just at what Overland Park did. Probably a bad example, since we didn't use it, but I know in your area, Overland Park is the big boy on the block. Once we have all the positions in the pay grade, then we need to place people in the pay grade. And I do this very, very easily. In your case, it's who's ever below the minimum goes to the minimum of the pay grade. Because obviously, we don't want people below the minimum of the pay grade. For my purposes only, anybody who's within the salary range, I'm not giving an increase to. There's no cost to put that employee in the salary schedule from this end. So we give you that as a base cost. So then you know what you can do with the folks within the salary schedule. What happens when we do this, though, it can, it creates something called in-range compression. Because we've taken the pay ranges that were here, and now we've shifted them over to this way. And so people who might have been at the top or the middle are now shift to the middle to the lower end of the pay range. And so you have longer tenured employees clogging up the system, because you can't hire anybody with the new salary range other than hiring them in higher than some of your current employees. And that's usually not a pretty good sell for employees. I've been here for five or six years, and now you're going to hire somebody brand-new and make them, give them pay higher than myself. So what the city has done is we've looked at, okay, based upon years of service, where should they be placed within the salary range? So if they're one to three years, they've got no increase except for placement at the minimum. If they had three to five years, they were placed at the position point. If they have more years, they were placed at the midpoint of the pay grade. So we have a minimum, we have a position point, we have a midpoint, and we have a maximum. And I'll let, if you have any questions to this, I'll let Beth and Tim talk to this a little bit more, but they've calculated what the cost is for that implementation. I strongly encourage you, if you can, to do this. I worked all day yesterday and today with another, with a county who, in 2016, I said, you need to put a plan in place to get people into the salary range. And what's happened is they didn't do that. And so now we have all of their employees clogging up at, at the, at the position point or slightly below. It's causing lots of problems. It's going to cost them some pretty significant dollars to get those folks further within the salary range so that we can get them where they should appropriately be, as well as give you some really good hiring salary ranges. So as I said before, there's technically three adjustments. There's the adjustment to the salary schedule every year based on some economic indicator. And it allows to maintain the overall competitiveness of the market. So I call it kind of a course correction to make sure that that salary schedule is, is keeping in line. Obviously, you then have your employee increase with adequate performance. And then the market adjustment is some, as a tool you can use to help those folks that may not be meeting, meeting those benchmark places within the salary schedule. Some years you may use it, some years you may not. It depends upon what you've done with that range. And then every three to five years, you should go out and do a mini comp study where you go out and look at the market again. And maybe we need to adjust those ranges a little bit. Maybe we need to move a position or two. And if you do that, you're going to maintain the health of the schedule and not have to spend a lot of money in which to adjust it. I'm not going to spend much time on benefits, other than we did look at your premiums and how your premiums compare to other surrounding organizations. We also looked at what's the out-of-pocket exposure to an employee. So if I have my premium and my, my deductible and my out-of-pocket max, what does that do? It doesn't hurt you, but it's not putting you at the top of the pack. So you're right in the middle. You're doing okay. It's information you probably want to share with your insurance broker and see if there's any types of, of plan design changes that you may want to consider in the next benefit year. Holidays and sick leave are competitive. There really are no, you're right in the, you're right with the same number or close to the same number of holidays. You're close to the same number of sick leave, et cetera. So we have no recommendations for changes on that. Because of work-life balance, you might want to consider adjusting your salary schedules and giving a little bit more vacation to the front end of this, of the newer employees. And just because, you know, people want to make sure that they have the time off in order to spend with families and things of that nature. So with that, I am going to stop talking now, and I will stop sharing my screen. And if anybody has any questions, I'll be more than happy to entertain them.
Okay, I'll go around the horn. Anybody got a question?
I, I, I noticed slide number 15, where it says employees place the minimum, they get a raise. No increase for those that are within the range. Well, if Marcus needs a raise because he's not in the range, and I'm making the range and I don't get a raise, I'm going to be mad, because Marcus got a raise and I didn't. I mean, that's just a tough line right there to draw.
And the question I would have, and I don't know the answer to this, did you folks give an increase to folks in 2023 already?
We will be giving, yes.
Yeah, I think we're, we're doing the market adjustment, but we haven't done a merit yet, and we haven't done anything with this, obviously. We've, we've programmed it into the budget, because I think, you know, like we had spoken about, I think we were originally hoping this, this was going to be wrapped up toward the end of 2022, but I think everyone's just been so busy. But, but so, I mean, this has been programmed into the budget. But we haven't been able to allocate anything for people yet.
Is this mostly your hourly employees, not salary employees? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, the increases actually are throughout the entire organization. I'll let Beth talk to that.
Every department is in, has been affected. You know, it's, it's not just one department. There are some departments that are heavier with these changes than others. And I will say, it's probably the departments that we do have more trouble filling positions in. So, yeah, it's going to affect. Uh, so yeah, it's gonna affect some of our departments.
You go to spots.
That, that's clear. But my question is, is it? You have your salaried employees.
There are salaried employees that are also affected, yeah, yeah.
And what I want to know is, is, is this mostly the hourly employees that we're talking about?
It is most, it is mostly the hourly.
Okay, thank you.
So I think most of our salaried employees have been here longer. And then, like she had said earlier in the slide, the people who have been here longer are usually a little bit in better shape on the scale.
I, I have been concerned with the uh, hourly employees also, and I, it was clear to me in some cases, we just got to do better. We're not going to retain some of the people.
Yeah.
It's going to be a revolving.
I felt like.
True statement?
Yes.
I felt like we've done a really good job the last several years because I know the council would always program four percent every year. And in normal circumstances, I think if you keep doing four percent every year, I, I think you stay competitive.
For salary employees, that's a really great.
Yeah, but, but I think with inflation and then, you know, like Dr. McGrath had said, it seems like every city around us is doing a pay study right now. So all of a sudden, you know, if we were competitive two years ago, we're less competitive now because every city's doing a pay study. So it's, it's been challenging the last years.
When was the last time we did a pay study?
I think sixteen.
Can we go to slide sixteen? Can you show slide sixteen? Anybody hear me? Slide one.
Well, I think Dr. McGrath, Dr. McGrath was doing the screen share, that's why.
Dr. McGrath, can you go to slide one, six? My, my question is, can you, can you walk through that slide again? Open up.
I can walk through it because it's my slide.
Let me get it back up.
Yeah, if you could bring up slide sixteen, the one uh, we'd work on.
Yep, and I appreciate, I appreciate the help that you focused on it because obviously you know, you know, you know the numbers more than I do.
Right, yes, yes.
So walk this through again because that, I'm not arguing it, I'm just trying to ensure.
Right.
The bottom line, are we talking total implementation cost per year? Or that's what we're saying, in order to be, in order to take care of those uh, majority of hourly wages, majority of these versus the salary ranges is the four percent or cost increase. Inflation's nine to twelve percent, right? So um, we're looking at increasing cost to the city employees of about a hundred and thirty-two grand a year increase is what we're saying.
Correct, yes.
And you said you've already figured that into the budget, Tim?
That was, that was included as a capital and supplemental item when we were talking about projects for twenty twenty-three. So when the budget that we did in July, um, I believe this was included, right?
It was, yes. We took a percentage of typically what our four percent market adjustment. Um, I think I took three percent and built that in as a CNS item, knowing that we were probably going to need to adjust salaries and wages. Uh, so we built that in to cover the, a cost of the compensation study. Now, I will say, when I did this, I knew I had that number in the budget. So that's what I tried to keep us close to. If you look at this, you know, we addressed the one to three years of service, we addressed three to five years of service and five plus years of service. I kind of feel like there's another level, ten plus years of service that we should probably be looking at as well. But if I put that number in, it, it's much higher than a hundred thirty that we budgeted. So that would be something moving forward, like the twenty twenty-four budget. Depending on how that budget looks and what's going on, we would come again and say, hey, here's, here's what we would need to fix some compression with people who have been here ten plus years in their positions. Um, at that time, we would present that.
Now, my question, my question is, the five plus years. Okay, let me back up. The one to three years, we're talking nine employees. We say there's an inflation rate that we agree is probably over six percent. Would we agree? So this study is based on a three percent. Are we really doing justice now from what we knew back in July to now? What really is the cost? If we're really concerned about the hourly and we're trying to get after the market of employees that we don't want turnover? Is this still a valid number? And if it's not, I'm okay with it. I mean, that's the reason why we're here. What should that number be in order to increase what the real inflation is versus a normal cost of inflation is around three percent? We're not in that right now, we're in a state of inflation.
Correct, so.
So it's nine percent.
Everyone will get a market adjustment of four percent. Every employee will get a four percent market adjustment. This is an additional cost in, the four percent is in the base budget.
Okay, okay.
This hundred thirty thousand was additionally built in just for the purpose of addressing.
Thank you. Now I got it.
I'm glad you asked that because that, that was clarification I need.
Yeah.
So Beth, you did my stuff.
Yep.
You get your rights.
Okay, I got it now, really good, thank you.
Anybody else have a question?
And Dr. McGrath, I appreciate you laying this out and going through this full description again. I really appreciate it.
No problem, thank you very much. And hopefully you will uh, implement because right now out of twenty-two years in business, we have a ninety-eight percent um, rate of implementation, so please do not break my record. Uh, and uh, if you have any questions, give us a call as you go through the process of implementation. Thank you very much and have a good night.
You can stay on while we make the motion just so you can feel secure.
I wasn't into it, I was personally.
Okay, I like.
You're not free to go yet.
I need a motion to approve the compensation study as presented.
Go move, second.
Have a motion and a second call roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Motion passed, thanks for some more. Item number three of new businesses, the Leavenworth County Humane Society. The Leavenworth County Humane Society reached out to the city about financial challenges. And we have encouraged them to attend the council meeting tonight um, to brief the governing body on their situation. So do we have somebody?
Uh, there was a medic, I'm Margaret before and I'm the acting um, president and secretary of Leavenworth County Humane Society. And we had an emergency. So Crystal is on her way, hey boss, to uh, Blue Pearl. Um, so she asked that we push this until next month or even into a work session. I don't feel comfortable answering all of your questions.
Sure.
I mean, I can try, but I'm not, I'm not Crystal.
Yeah, that's no problem. We, we can just uh, uh, make a motion to table. Yeah.
Work session.
We can table it and then uh, um, we can work this at the next work session.
Yeah.
Put it on as an item.
That sounds good.
So I need a motion to table it and the request for assistance from Leavenworth County Humane Society.
Go move, second.
I have a motion and a second call roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Motion passed, thanks Mark, thank you.
Okay, item number four is purchase of police vehicles. The Lansing Police Department requested bids for police package patrol vehicles from three vendors. Two of the three dealers responded with prices for Dodge Durango police vehicles. Uh, the first bid was Davis Moore Inc., Dodge Durango police vehicle for forty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty cents. Um, the second bid was uh, Main Street Chrysler Dodge Durango police vehicle for forty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. This is the cost for the vehicles only and does not include the additional cost of uplifting the vehicles with emergency equipment. Um, these vehicles were included in the budget, one under the Police Department Equipment Reserve Fund and the other under the general fund. Under the general fund. So I need a motion to approve the purchase of one police vehicle from Main Street Dodge for forty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. Are we just paying, we just buy them one?
But yeah, I thought we were just giving one this year.
Okay.
Yeah. There's one for another department.
Okay.
So move, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm really happy that we're still continuing to drive and we're getting excellent bids from our locals.
If you guys want to give me two, I'll take two, but you know, we're asking for one.
Well, we're in the heart of giving right.
What it costs to do all the.
Yeah, fitting?
You need to fit it to be.
We try to, we try to salvage, we try to salvage and recycle as much equipment, but you know, light bars or electronics. So it, you know, if one's starting to fail, there's no use putting it on one.
Right.
So I mean, you're talking ten grand on a car.
That was my.
Yeah, that's, that's a conservative cost.
Last year you got two trucks, this is Durango, so you stick, sticking with the Durango instead of the trucks now or what are we doing?
Uh, well, uh, it makes the fleet out a little bit um, to give us an option of different things. Durango, Durango serves a good purpose. I mean, the truck has served a purpose, I mean, um, the officers are liking to drive it. Um, it, it runs good, it handles good, but I don't want to put all of my vehicles in one design because when you have a flaw in them, then you're going to end up paying for that flaw year after year after year.
Yep.
So, but the Durangos have done good for us, the, the, the fifteen hundreds are doing really good for us right now too, so.
How about your gas mileage? The sedan's getting any better than the Durango's, Durango's getting any worse than the sedan?
They're, they're police cars and they drive around the city, so there is no such thing as gas mileage.
Oh, six miles a gallon works good.
You probably average about fifteen miles per gallon.
Oh, that's really.
Yeah, because you got it.
And the Durango with all that equipment on it?
Yeah. You gotta remember, a police car sits and idles a lot, so yeah, so you get your idle time. So gas mileage isn't uh, um, isn't an issue. That's also why I go with five, seven, because it's the, the bigger engine will just handle the idle time a lot better than, than, than a six will, so we get a longer life out of it on there, so.
Are there any other questions?
For the chief?
No, thanks chief. And we have a motion and a second. Call roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
All right, thanks chief. Item number five is purchase of administrative vehicle. The city clerk admin department requests bids for special service truck from four vendors. The only response received was from CDJ Automotive LLC Ram fifteen hundred special services for thirty-eight thousand, fifteen dollars. This was budgeted out of the equipment replacement fund. Yeah. So I do need a motion to approve the purchase of Ram fifteen hundred special service pickup from CDJ Automotive LLC for a price of thirty-eight thousand and fifteen dollars.
Go move, second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on this one?
Where's this vendor at, CDJ?
Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram, so the, the Lansing one.
We saw the Lansing one?
I, I think we just worded it differently, but yeah, this is the one in Lansing.
Main Street, the other.
Right.
They're one and same, right?
Yes, they are.
So is this the truck that we talked about as potential going back and looking at used and then looking at potentially getting something we can put a, you know, snowplow or something on the front, is that what this?
It is, and I'll, I'll let Jim kind of talk about upfitting it. I, we, we did try to include a couple of es, I shouldn't say estimates. I mean, we, we included quotes for pre-owned vehicles, just so you guys could see what the comparison would be. And it's, it's challenging because, you know, we put those in there and it's possible they're not even on the lot anymore. Uh, but uh, but we did put that in there so you guys could kind of see the difference between pre-owned and, and new. And, and Jim, I don't know if you want to talk about upfitting it or anything like that.
Uh, I got, got a hold of Napa High today, they gave me a, a current quote after January one of uh, six thousand sixty-one dollars for a snowplow to attach to the front of that. Um, that's just for the snowplow, doesn't add on any lighting or anything that you want to additional on there. So um, for lighting, you're, you're looking at probably about eight, nine hundred dollars for lighting and then install cost on that. Snowplow pushing, so.
So how long you gotta wait to get this? Are you like ordering it and you gotta wait a little while or is this something?
They said approximately a hundred twenty days. That put us into like April, somewhere thereabouts.
I think there were some vehicles last year where we were, we were waiting six months, nine months, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the average is almost a year now. For a new vehicle.
Yeah.
But the options that we put on it and what we're asking for is a little bit different. It puts it ahead of the line than it would other vehicles, so.
You did go with the heated leather seats and cruise control and upgrade the stereo. I figured that's what you were doing, Jim.
Yep.
We're, we're going to get a lot of use out of this, right? I, I remember discussing this at the, I think it was a work session or whatever. And the mileage on the van that we're replacing, didn't have a lot of mileage on it.
Yeah.
Right, so I just worry about, you know, spending uh, thirty-eight thousand dollars on a vehicle, it's just going to sit around a lot, I, I worry about that.
From what we're looking at, it's going to be multi-use, everybody can use it.
Okay.
It, it'll be something that people want to drive, people that, you know, want to utilize it instead of being afraid of it and just sitting there.
Yeah, that was the big thing with, with that big fifteen passenger van. You know, Tish wouldn't want to drive that to Wichita to the city clerks conference. Whereas, you know, a, a regular pickup truck, she might. We might put her in the snowplow too, we haven't decided that yet. But uh, but, but I, I think Jim's right, I think more employees would utilize this since it's a more usable.
That's fine. With the snowplow, that will put it in a lot more usage.
Oh yeah, definitely.
Just in itself right there.
Okay, any more questions for you? Okay, we have a motion and a second, call roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Motion passed, item number six is aquatic design contract and scope of services. Waters Edge Aquatic Design has been working with the city since the design inception of the splash pad during phase one of the master plan. Waters Edge has provided conceptual design of an aquatic center, a website for public information and feedback. And they have hosted an open house at very, in various other tasks. Waters Edge was asked to provide a contract and scope of services to design the aquatic center. So I need a motion to authorize the contract with Waters Edge Aquatic Design and authorize the mayor to, uh, to sign that contract.
Go move, second.
We motion any second, any discussion?
I'll just mention uh, Jeff Bartley with Waters Edge is here in case you guys have any questions or anything like that. Uh, we, we brought him up for the meeting, so.
Okay.
Of course, I got a question.
Yeah. Do you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay, please just come up to the mic.
Thanks for coming tonight, I appreciate it. So in that contract, there was, there was two architect type fees. The first one was structural and the other one was constructional or something like that. Can you explain the difference between the two of them? One was like ninety grand and the other one was two hundred ninety-three grand.
Yeah, hourly rate.
So the um, the contract is broken up into various phases. Um, so we don't, when, when we get started, we don't start in with, with uh, the full design immediately. What we would do is start with a design that's more of a planning process. So that first phase is what's considered schematic design.
That's it, schematic.
Schematic design, and that is where we will uh, dig into the site that we're working on and we will revisit. Uh, the concept plan that we've shown isn't, isn't the, necessarily the concept plan that we'll end up with. So we'll revisit that, we'll study that, we're taking in the feedback that we've received from the surveys, from the website. So we're going to revisit the, the concept plan, we'll look at the site, we'll do a, a whole site assessment on that, where to place the aquatic center, so that's all part of the schematic design, design phase. And then once, and then we're establishing the budget. For that, we're working within the budget and, and, and estimating the cost of the project. And then we follow that with a design development phase, which then we're digging in more detail. And at that point, we're, we're really studying like the, the buildings room by room. What are these, you know, what are the rooms going to be in the building? What are those finishes, what are the materials for the aquatic center? What exactly, if we're going to have water slides, what are those exact models of water slides? What, what is the chemical treatment system going to be? What are the filters going to be? So we're, we're digging in with your staff on the exact details of that. So, so once we've done that, we present another report. It basically says these are the details that are going into the design. And then once that's approved or reviewed and blessed, then we roll into a phase where we create the documents. Those are the documents that contractors will use to bid it and, and to build the facility. So that's that final design, construction document phase. And then we follow with the bidding phase, that's the, the getting the price for it, procuring who the contractor is, uh, getting the exact price of the facility, bringing that back to you. And then you're authorizing, this is, this is the facility, this is exact cost from the contractor. And you authorize that and then it rolls into the construction phase. And we take that through all the way to a grand opening, making sure it gets built.
From the schematic phase, that takes about?
Um, it would take, um, we're developing with the staff. Um, it would take, um, we're developing with staff, um, what the schedule could be, uh, and, um.
Yeah, we, we have that. I think we're gonna try to put that on the screen if we can.
We've produced, um, a fairly detailed first draft of the schedule, and, and I don't know how important the details of it are, other than we're working through each of these phases, and we're anticipating that, um, say that first schematic design phase would start, you know, after you authorize and we get, we have a kickoff, we get going, and we get the final, uh, site survey done. But that first phase would take us through, uh, into March. So the first couple of months to, to really site, adapt the facility, uh, get us through March, bring that back and have it reviewed. We need time for, for everyone to review that and bless that, and then the design development.
There it is.
Phase. So that's, that's our, and again, this is a draft or preliminary schedule. Um, so we could take that design development, we think through March, and then once we're done with that, we start towards the end of March to, into this design development phase, where we're, we're working more closely on the details, and then that would take us through, uh, by this schedule through the end of April. And then, once that's done, it takes us a little bit of time to compile the documents. These will be, you know, a hundred page of plans and, you know, uh, for this facility, and then, you know, a hundred pages of specs. Um, and that'll take us into the summer for completion of that. So with this schedule, we anticipate being done, we can be done sometime this summer, late summer, and then, at that point, we decide, you know, we take it out to bid, and we decide what's optimum for the city to get that, get it bid, and get it constructed for you, and getting the best value, best price for you.
This, just for the pool, or I've heard some discussions about maybe combining the pool with the splash pad that was at City Park? What, what all does this include?
So we, we spoke about that as a council, either the last meeting or two council meetings ago, and I'm not sure we really landed on a decision on that, but I know Jeff and I have spoken about it, Jason and I have spoken about it. We, staff really likes the concept of, you know, having one set of pumps, one set of chemicals, not having to go different places multiple times a day. Um, so even though we want to make improvements to City Park, and we should make improvements to City Park, um, you know, I, I feel like we, I think staff kind of likes the idea of putting the splash pad next to the pool.
I think it's a reasonable request.
I do, too.
I think we need to talk about it, but, yeah.
I do, too, cause undertaking this undertaking is a big thing in our city. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. You know, and if, if, if we get so big, and this thing is so nice, and five, ten years from now, we want to add more splash pads to a baseball park? Okay, but.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm with you right now.
I, I may be wrong, but, uh, and this is just my hunch, but I think if we add them together, it's gonna be useful, too.
Yeah.
There, there are a lot of benefits for that. There's certainly, um, on your end, you know, you're pooling your resources so you're not spreading them thin across two different sites. There, there, there is also benefit for this facility where that splash pad can be designed as part of the aquatic center itself, as to make it one nicer facility, but it also could, could be controlled and fenced separated. It can be used outside of the, uh, the pool open hours, so. There are a lot of benefits, but that, I'll say, you know, that's not a, uh, an issue you have to decide tonight, and that's exactly what the schematic design phase is for, is, is visiting that idea and the site and, and coming up with the options and then, and then having those decisions made then.
I just want to get it right, and we're gotten it. We're very proud of it and no regrets, and, you know, I wish we'd have done that.
We'll have those, I'm sure. No matter how big we go, we'll be like, we should have done this.
Jesse, just.
Yeah.
This is scary as world for thirty seconds.
Well, we'll be, our ten is, if, if there are regrets, you'll, you'll have been informed from the very beginning, and you'll be a part of that process, so, so it'll be, it'll be yours.
Yeah.
Once done. The, the good and the bad will be collectively, you know, our, ours together, so.
I'll settle for way more good.
And it, and with that, and with that process, it ends up being good.
Yeah.
I like the idea that you pitched with the big bubble that covers it during the winter so we can use it all year. I like that.
Yeah.
I do, I like that.
That is.
That way we're swimming in swim meets and all year. I like that bubble steam.
All right.
Thank you.
Your Councilman Major will write you a check.
That's right.
Yes.
He said he'd find it.
It's not a bad idea, though, cause I got Carrie thinking about it, too. It's like, you know, that's probably not a bad idea to be looking at the bubble cover, you know, where.
I, I do like the idea about worrying about this one water feature all at one time and not worrying about a couple of them, cause our, our people have to get used to this. You know, if you got multiple, uh, water features all over town, then you gotta worry about going here and there and worry about different chemical balances and stuff like that. I still say, it's, it's a negative thing, saying, once we close the ball fields at City Park, there's not gonna be enough traffic there to warrant having a water feature there, period. So I, I like the fact that we're keeping it all here in one area, so.
In one of the.
With Fairview Towns, they're gonna have a lot more local traffic in that area, too.
One of the things that we'd spoken about, too, is, you know, with, with City Park, um, maybe if there is this splash pad next to the pool on West Mary, maybe long-term, we do a single pass system at City Park. It's a little less expensive, a little bit smaller. Cause if you remember, those single pass systems were significantly less expensive than the, the recirculation one. So that's, that was an idea that we had talked about internally, uh, longer term for City Park.
I would like to add, it's a, this project will be significant, uh, site development project as well. It's a new facility, and, and so we, it's not gonna just be us working on the project. We have various team members to handle different specialties, and Ben Gasper, um, is a site civil engineer. Uh, I think he's very familiar, uh, with the city and done lots of projects with you, and he's on our team as well to help, help develop the site.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? No, okay. Well, we have a motion and a second, so call roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Sudnica?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number seven is land sale contract for four acres in Town Center. The city received an offer from Zimmerman Properties to purchase approximately four acres of Lot One at the Lansing Town Center Platte. Lot One is currently fourteen point five acres, um, to construct a fifty-unit apartment complex. The final sale of the property is contingent upon Zimmerman receiving tax credits for the project from the state of Kansas. Zimmerman Properties also owns Covington Woods in Lansing, which would be directly south, southwest of the proposed parcel. Proposed purchase price is six hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars for approximately four acres. I need a motion to authorize a land sale contract for four acres Town Center and authorize a mayor's signature.
Don't move, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
First question is, if you don't get the tax credits, the deal's off, is that the bottom line?
Uh, if it's up to me and we don't get those tax credits, it'll be off until the next cycle. I'm, I'm willing to try again.
For the tax credit.
Being the, the city owns the land, obviously that's up to you all, but.
And this, the. Okay, that's.
So you would be visiting us again?
Will have me, if you, yeah.
I, I've had a, a couple of people ask me this again, and I know it's been said before, but just for their edification, this is not a government subsidized proposal that you're bringing forward. It's a, can you talk to them a little?
Sure, sure. No, it's not government subsidized at all. It's, um, they, these are federal tax credits that are, uh, divvied out from the IRS to each state. Um, there's no, no subsidized, uh, it's all private risk. Those ti, those tax credits are sold privately. It's all, again, not to be redundant, but private risk, um, no Section Eight, um, no subsidized, um, yeah, it's truly workforce housing.
That's the word.
Yes, sir.
That's what I didn't figure out. That's what I forgot. Workforce.
Yep. Which is employment they have to prove annually.
Right.
So this would be a good location for our starting workforce, our, our teachers, professionals that are just getting started.
Ab, absolutely, and then, um.
We desperately need it.
Yeah, and going off that pay schedule study, just looking at some of those, those entry-level hourly jobs, I, I was just sitting there thinking.
They would call.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
I always do.
Yeah.
I just want to make that, that clear for.
Yes, I'm, I'm glad you asked. Thank you.
All right, any more questions? Mr. Zimmerman?
Thank you all.
No, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Sudnica?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number eight is executive session for economic development. Actually, I need a motion to go into executive session for the preliminary discussion of economic development activities in accordance with KSA seven-five-four dash four-three-one-nine Bravo four for fifteen minutes, beginning at eight oh one and ending at eight sixteen.
Don't move.
Don't move.
Have a motion and a second. Call roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Sudnica?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Cause he's a South Dakota.
He, he, he has a few left.
I need a motion to return to open session.
Don't move, second.
Have a motion and a second to return to open session.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. What's left of it?
With the caveat that there was no binding action taken during the executive session. So I have a motion and a second, call roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Sudnica?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Okay, we're back to open session. Let's see, department heads, anything from the department heads? City attorney?
Nothing, reporter.
Don't see the city engineer in here anymore. Okay, Tim, city administrator. Thanks.
LCDC is hosting their annual meeting on Friday, January twentieth at the Riverfront Community Center. If any of you guys are interested, let me know and we can make some reservations for that. Um, so it's over lunch at the Riverfront on the twentieth, so please reach out to me if any of you guys want, Mr. Clemmons, Mr. Brungard. What, what day did you say the twentieth is? What'd you say it was? It's a Friday.
Who's speaking it? Can you remember, Tim? Okay.
Off the top of my head, no, I don't.
All right.
Yeah, put me down.
I remember. I thought it was an interesting speaker, though, so.
Put me down. You, okay. Okay, great.
Um.
You asked about the speakers, that was you.
Are you going?
Yeah, I'll.
Pete Fullerton?
Who?
Pete Fullerton?
I don't know. What, where is, who is he?
Assistant Director of Kansas City Aviation Department.
Oh, yeah, he's probably gonna talk about the.
Oh, okay. Well, even if, if anyone else wants to sleep on it and let me know, um, that'd be great. Uh, so right now I have Councilmen Brungard, Clemmons, and Major, so. Uh, another thing that was pretty exciting, uh, you know, I think last year we had applied for a couple of, uh, base grants, Building a Stronger Economy Grant through the state, and, uh, none of our grant applications were successful. Uh, the state's rolling out round two of that grant program. Um, so we might be talking about different ideas or, or projects that we could apply for a base grant for. Um, so be on the lookout for that or, or be brainstorming things. I think most of the things we applied for previously were in coordination with private businesses. Um, so, uh, if there's any type of project where we can cooperate with someone, we'd love to do that.
Which ones got shot down last year?
Do you remember we applied for, I, like, a spec building and, and moving a sewer line to make a property more developable?
Okay, yeah.
And I think I'm roofing, yeah, yeah.
No, I remember them now.
Yep. Um, and then, uh, the library has this really neat, uh, app that I'd really encourage you guys to download, check it out. It, uh, shows you library scheduling, events, books you've checked out, you can renew things. Uh, I'd really encourage you guys and, uh, anyone listening, download that library app. It is very cool. That is all.
Awesome.
That's it.
Really?
All right.
That's all I've got.
All right, we'll go around the horn, Dan.
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Good, thanks, Dan. Why is it Dan and then Gene? Okay, Marcus.
No, it was a lot of good work tonight. Thank you very much, city. Appreciate it.
I don't know. Hey, she wrote them down, so.
I'm sorry.
I'm just, I'm just following the list, man, yeah.
You don't have to come.
That's what I do.
You don't have to come back to me, you already.
Yeah, you're done, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Dawn. Then Carrie.
Kind of worries this.
I know.
Thanks to the presenters. Um, did a nice job. Happy New Year to everybody. Call again, Mayor.
All right, thanks, Carrie. Jesse?
I'm glad we got to, uh, discuss our employees' salaries today, and I just think we should treat them well financially. I mean, people go to work for money, you know, they don't go there for fun. They go there to make a salary to support their families, and they won't hang around if we're not making them happy financially, so we need to take care of them. Um, but I'm just glad we had an opportunity to discuss that tonight. I'm glad we discussed the aquatic center. It's gonna be awesome when we get it all done. I know it's gonna be a long process, but it's gonna be awesome, so that's all I've got.
All right, thanks, Jesse.
Great.